Good evening and welcome to the January 29, 2024 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have a special training on the city's harassment policy, ethics policy, and the state open meetings rules. And to lead us in that, we have our city attorneys Lynn Board and Frank Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The training that you're receiving this evening is a biennial training, so you're required to do this every two years. As I think all of you except Jamil received this training a year ago. But after, we wanted to get kind of on cycle with the elections, so the training would occur shortly after the election. So it will be two years from now that you will receive it next time around. So as the slide indicates, Frank and I are going to cover three different topics this evening. I'll be covering the harassment, the city's harassment policy. Frank will be focusing on the city's ethics law as well as open meetings requirements. So I'm going to start off with the harassment policy. The city has for many, many years had provisions addressing harassment and discrimination that was applicable to our employees. However, that policy was not applicable to our elected officials. So in 2021, kind of based on an incident that occurred in another jurisdiction, the mayor and council asked the question of, well, you know, what happens when an elected official does this conduct and it's not an employee? So coming out of that, the mayor and council appointed a subcommittee that included council members, Sessma and Spiegel. And then Tanisha and I, city manager and I, worked with that group to craft a draft of the policy that ultimately got adopted in July of 2022. Obviously with a few changes as that went through the approval process. So it's fairly unusual amongst municipalities for there to be a basically a personnel policy that addresses elected officials. But I think, you know, the city was very thoughtful in its consideration of this issue and wanted to make sure that there was basically consequences for any wrongdoing, or potential wrongdoing of its elected officials. So the policy, you all did adopt a regulation, Regulation 2022 in July of 2022. And it does provide that the city is committed to providing a work environment that treats all individuals with respect, is free from discrimination and free from harassment. So this slide basically shows you the protected classifications. These are all set by federal law for the purposes of harassment and discrimination. So unlawful discrimination or harassment includes any behavior that threatens, forces, humiliates, intimidates, or embarrasses an individual based on one of these protected classifications. And they're all the things that you're used to seeing based on race, sex, national origin, color, ancestry, all of those type of factors. Now, the conduct can be verbal. Comments such as, hey, you look really sexy in that outfit today, you know, kind of not an appropriate thing to say. You should wear it more often to work. Or nonverbal, including gestures, leering, posting photos, lewd emails, you know, those types of situations. And certainly, there is the physical side of inappropriate touching that would be included. So the policy that the city adopted does apply to all elected officials while you're, the caveat here is while you're acting in your official capacity. So not that we condone any misconduct during your personal time, but what you do at your primary place of employment, not city-related, what you do, you know, at home, when you're out with friends, is not covered by this policy. So it's really focused on what you're doing when you are acting in your official capacity with the city. But that includes, you know, certainly not only these types of meetings, but when you are out and about, if you're at a city-sponsored event, you know, if you're at Summerfest or, you know, something like that, if you're at an MML conference, participating in those types of activities, conferences, you know, whenever you are acting in your capacity as either, you know, council member or the mayor, that's when this policy comes into place. And I think the, I think I mentioned earlier, this kind of came out of a situation out of another jurisdiction. And ultimately, the finding in that case was that the harassment did occur, but it was not related to the individual's capacity as an elected official. So there were, there were basically, other than political, there were no consequences for that particular action. So the, the policy does prohibit sexual harassment, which is seeking sexual favors, advances, expectations, demands, or pressures for sexual favors and/or other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature. A lot of times, this can be what I call kind of secondhand conduct. If you are all together, you're making lewd jokes, and you do that in front of Tanisha on a regular basis, she can feel uncomfortable or that that's unwelcome, even if, you know, the comments aren't really focused on her. So there, you know, you do need to obviously be aware of your surroundings and who's around. And, you know, obviously, the best conduct, the best idea is not to have those types of discussions. But, you know, certainly be aware of, you know, there is the possibility that the person, the individual, the complainant or the potential victim is not really the person that you're focusing the comments to, but somebody on a regular basis that kind of hears, overhears these conducts or comments. You know, a lot of, most of this really applies in a little bit more of a traditional employment setting. And, you know, obviously, you all interact with the employees on a fairly regular basis, but you obviously don't supervise employees or deal with them on a daily basis. So a lot of the comments I'll make tonight are a little bit more in the conduct or context of a regular employment situation. People typically think of sexual harassment is male supervisor, female victim. It can be, you know, female supervisor, position power, male victim, same sex. You know, the sexual orientation of the individuals involved is not really relevant. It's whether the comments are unwelcome. So the focus based on federal law is really whether the prohibited conduct has an impact on the individual's employment. And again, you know, you all generally aren't involved in hiring and firing of employees, with the exception of the city manager and myself. But there has to be some consequence to the, you know, to the, the action itself. So, you know, it may be something like, I'll give just a few examples here of where, you know, something that you all might do that could have an impact on employment. If you're saying like, you know, unless you do X, Y, and Z, I'm going to suggest to the city manager, she doesn't promote you. Something like that would be, something that would definitely impact an employee's work situation. So that would not be acceptable conduct. So this slide really just shows you what harassment generally includes. So it's discrimination, and again, those are things based on sex, race, those types of classification, verbal epithets, innuendos, inappropriate comments. It can be, you know, certainly physical contact, but also, you know, gestures, posting of photographs, you know, all of those types of things that make employees feel, employees or the public, actually, you know, it's not just employees, make them feel that you're creating an offensive or hostile environment for them. So what happens when somebody believes that one of you all has done something inappropriate, something that would arise to the situation of discrimination or harassment? So the policy that you adopted in July of 2022 has pretty detailed procedures of how those things are handled. We do always encourage, not only for, in your situation, employee situation, if somebody feels that they're being harassed or discriminated, you know, kind of the first line of defense is to talk to the person. Say like, hey, you know, I don't appreciate it that you have all these, you know, photos of naked people posted in your queue, and that makes me feel uncomfortable. Or I don't appreciate, you know, the jokes that you all make in my presence. But that's often a really hard thing for people to do. You know, a lot of people feel intimidated, and I think they would feel especially intimidated, you know, going to you as the mayor and council, you know, to make that kind of complaint. But we do always encourage that that's kind of the best first approach. Say, you know, this makes me feel uncomfortable, please stop doing this action. Hopefully, that solves the situation. But if it doesn't, there is definitely a more formal process. So someone can make a complaint, and that can be filed with, it's filed with our Director of Human Resources. But there are options for them to talk to HR, to talk to my office first, to talk about it. We did put a one-year statute of limitations here so that if someone feels that there is some conduct, they need to report it within one year in order for it to be investigated. And we did that for a number of reasons. One year is kind of the EOC deadline. If somebody would file a formal federal discrimination complaint, they have to do it within one year of the conduct itself in order to proceed. The other thing is, you know, over time, people's memory fades. Sometimes I don't remember what I did yesterday, much less, you know, nine months ago, if I made some comment to somebody. So, you know, we really encourage people to do it sooner rather than later because, you know, evidence fades, memory fades over time. So obviously, the sooner, the better. But really, the important thing is we want to make sure that if there is a complaint, no matter how minor or how trivial, we do have an obligation to investigate that complaint. And that's for a number of reasons. One is first, probably most importantly, it is the right thing to do. But also, under federal law, if, if the city investigates a complaint and then takes appropriate action based on that complaint, that does provide us a legal defense in the event that we are subsequently sued. The individual may still have liability, but the city itself would not have liability if we've done our due diligence to investigate and take appropriate action. But obviously, it's the right thing to do. We don't do everything just for legal defense, but so there is the balance there. So once a complaint is filed, then that gets turned over to the Human Resources Director for evaluation. Again, depending on the nature of the complaint, the Human Resources Director may decide that this is something that can be investigated internally, or they can hire or assign an impartial investigator. My feeling is if it involves one of you, we're probably going to get an impartial investigator because, I mean, I just, it just seems like the right thing to do. Plus, I think employees might feel a little uncomfortable investigating, investigating you all. So again, in the policies and procedures, there's a very detailed procedure as to the investigation, how that's conducted. They interview witnesses. If you are the subject of the complaint, you would have the right to be. You're not obligated to participate in an interview, but you would have the right to be interviewed. You have the right to counsel. So HR does do all the interviews. They conduct, they gather all that information together, and then they prepare a report. That report can include a recommendation of action against the individual, but typically, typically, it's going to be more kind of fact-based of, you know, this is the information that we gathered. So once HR has completed that process, then it does go through a more, a little bit more formal hearing process. We kind of, when we were adopting the policy, went, kind of struggled a little bit about what's the appropriate body to hear these complaints. So we ended up with a, what we call a joint hearing board, which is comprised of both the Personnel Review Board and the Ethics Commission because we think that both of those bodies have expertise that can bear on these issues. And then we also thought, because both of those boards are fairly small, both have three members, that it was better to have a little bit larger group kind of looking at these issues. So again, the policy details a very detailed process for the hearing process. There is supposed to be a joint hearing within 20 days of the, the joint hearing board's receipt of the report from the Human Resources. If you are the subject of the complaint, you would get at least 10 days' notice of that hearing. And the, the hearings are close to the public unless you, as the complaint, want it to be public. You would have the right, if you feel you're being railroaded or that, you know, something's not right here, you would have the right to demand that be done in public, and then that would be done as an open hearing. But generally, we conduct these like we would most personnel, you know, type actions of where the hearing would be done in a closed meeting. So the, the hearing board, the joint hearing board would hear witnesses, would get, they would talk to, the investigator would present what information they found, what interviews they conducted, they can call witnesses. Again, if you are the subject, you would have the right to participate in that hearing. You'd have the right to testify, to cross-examine any of the witnesses, to present any evidence that you wanted to in that process. So then, at the end of that process, the joint hearing board would provide a report that would include, you know, both their findings as well as their recommendations. But they don't make a decision. It is just a recommendation, and that recommendation comes to the mayor and council. So once the city council gets that recommendation, that is considered in, their recommendation is considered in an open meeting. And that goes to the mayor and council. The mayor and council, you know, have to look at it and decide whether, you know, they agree or they don't agree. At that hearing, the, the complaint does not participate. I mean, obviously, since it's open to the public, they could sit down in the audience, but they would not participate in that discussion. In that process, and went, the one and only occasion we've given the mayor a vote, we did give the mayor a vote in that process. And we did want a super majority.
This is the vote you were looking for?
Recall that one of you will be absent, so it would be five people total. And we would require four votes in order to sustain the complaint. And the, the legal standard is that it's, it's more by proponents of the evidence, which is, means it's more likely than not that, that whatever the alleged conduct is actually occurred. And again, we made this a super majority because, you know, we wanted this to be taken seriously and not as kind of a political, any kind of political process. So the mayor and council would take a vote that's done by resolutions, so there would be a resolution, and then the official is notified in writing of the outcome of that process. So we did include some protections in here, in the policy itself. There's a protection against retaliation, and that's not only against the individual who makes the complaint, but any individuals who are interviewed or are included in the investigation process. So it would be a violation of the policy to retaliate against any of those individuals. We also wanted protections for you all, from people just making complete, making things completely up. So if an employee would file a complaint against you that is knowingly or intentionally false, they can be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment. So again, there's, there's kind of protections on both sides that are built in this. We did also include that, you know, this would not prevent anyone from going through their typical EOC process. Now, should they want to, they could still file a complaint of discrimination with the, with the EOC. We didn't, they're not waving that right by going through this process. So we had a lot of discussion about enforcement options of, again, if, in the unlikely event, hopefully it never happens, in the unlikely event that a majority of the council, a super majority of the council would find that inappropriate conduct did occur, what are the penalties that can be opposed, imposed? So we did put a range of penalties here, including a, basically a cease and desist order, telling the person to cease the activity, providing remedial training and education, removal of that individual from committee or other assignments, a form of censure at a public meeting, and last but not least, removal from office, which again is, you know, a very extreme remedy. But, you know, I think the discussion was to include that just in the event there is a very, very, very extreme case. And again, it's, it is the mayor and council that includes, that determines what these enforcement policies are.
Lynn, could you remind me, was the, the enforcement options, was that also by a super majority, or is that just on?
Yeah, that's by a super majority because that would be part of the resolution finding that the individual, that they can, that they did whatever the prohibited action was. So that would be by, you know, by the fore.
Okay, so the decision, the vote is, yes, they're guilty of what they were accused of, and this is the action that happens in one resolution?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Ellen, question on the hearing process. I've not read the 222, but now I will. Is there discovery?
There is, there is limited opportunity for discovery. Obviously, again, if you're accused, you would get a copy of the investigator's report and all of the attachments, if there's, you know, if there's emails or there's something, you know, if there's like physical evidence as well, you would have the opportunity for that. The, the joint hearing board does have the ability to require witnesses to attend. So there is, you know, kind of subpoena power and those types of things as well.
Thank you. How do you enforce that?
That is actually enforceable by the courts. So if somebody would, would fail to cooperate, we would be able to go into court to seek enforcement of that. And hopefully, we wouldn't have to do that, but that is possible. So we did add, there were kind of a few random things that we also, that we also included in this policy. I mean, the focus was really on kind of the discrimination harassment. But we did add some provisions of removal from office based on basically non-attendance at meetings. I included in here the no longer domicile in the city. That's already in the city charter, but we wanted to kind of set it out a little bit more specifically in this policy as well. But we also included a policy about missing meetings. So an elected official can be removed from office if they miss more than four consecutive meetings, except, and there's a whole bunch of exceptions here, if they give notification to the city clerk, and that's required to be at least eight hours before the meeting, if their absence is based on military service, or the council votes to grant an exception due to disability or unforeseen circumstances. You know, I think the last was, when we were drafting this, we had just kind of gone through the Henry Marafa situation, where he did miss a number of meetings based on health. And we were very hopeful that he would come back. So, I mean, I think that would have been kind of a circumstance if you know somebody's going to be out for a period of time for a health emergency. That would allow, you know, them not to be automatically moved from the council. The other part of this, it does allow for remote participation in meetings. So long as remote, that can't talk this thing, so long as remote participation does not exceed four consecutive meetings without the mayor and council's specific consent to do that. So that is really the personnel policy. Unless there are additional questions, I'm going to turn it over to Frank to talk about ethics.
Right ahead.
Okay, now it's time for fun, part two. Again, three parts. This is the second one, ethics. There, the main point is perceptions definitely count because part of this is for people to have a sense of trust in their local government. Most prohibitions are seeking to avoid appearances, appearance of impropriety, unfair conduct, bias, or favoritism. The overall goals, oh, I went in the wrong direction, sorry. Well, we'll do it that way then. The Ethics Ordinance's goals are to support elected officials, commission members, as well as staff in maintaining high standards of responsibility, ensuring trust, but also putting forth some clear standards of conduct to ensure fairness, and the goal, no self-dealing. The focus should be on what's best for the city, welfare of the citizens, and also establishing a process for disclosure, which we'll talk about. So key definitions as we get into this. One is, doing business with the city is a key focus. Meaning, if a business isn't doing business with the city, it doesn't become covered under these rules. So what's doing business with, pardon me?
Serge, there's a quick question that, so doing business meets like having like a contract with the city, not, I'm at Lowe's and I sold, you know, a few light bulbs to a city public, you know, Public Works Department that came in and bought them. As a just layman's?
I mean, if, if they bought more than $5,000 from this Lowe's, then I guess it would trigger it.
Right.
Okay.
But a couple of light bulbs?
It's really the $5,000 contract value, which could become in the form of a business contract or a grant to a nonprofit, right? It's $5,000 to an entity.
Okay.
That's it. Now, there are a couple of other standards beyond just the contract value. If you're, if you're a staff member and regulating, for instance, permits, other types of regulations, that's also covered regardless. It doesn't require a contract, and there are provisions for lobbyists as well. Who else is covered? Not just yourself, but any immediate family member. They also can't benefit. There's also an employment limitation or having a financial interest in a business that's negotiating or contracting. What does that mean? Financial interest is getting more than $1,000 a year or owning more than 3% of the overall value of the business. So free tickets, what are the limits there? If, again, doing business with the city from those, only okay if it's extended by the sponsoring entity and the purposes as outlined here, charitable, community, political event, as a courtesy or ceremony extended to the office. Sporting events prohibited for everybody, but for elected officials, for those limited purposes, tickets are okay. And the goal is really to prevent or prohibit conflicts of interest. So when there's something having a direct financial impact on you, again, remember the reference to self-dealing. That would be you, immediate family, or a qualified relative, which could be spouse, parent, child, sibling, or any business with which you're affiliated. And that's the being employed, $1,000 of value, or 3% of the overall value.
Sorry, just a question on that. If you own an interest in an enterprise that got merged into or acquired by another enterprise that's having a business relationship with the city, can you put your stuff in a trust, or you have to divest to, to get out of that? Or put it in, you know?
This is such a trivial question.
Probably, that may be a possibility. What we, I'm sure what we would recommend, if that's a possibility, is that's one of the rule, one of the things the Ethics Commission can provide, which is an advisory opinion, and that might be a condition, that the Ethics Commission would say, okay, this is okay if you meet the following conditions. And I could see a trust being?
Like a blind, some people do like blind trusts, and so they don't have to divest.
Yeah, the Ethics Commission can also issue modifications if the, it doesn't really meet the intent of the ordinance. So sometimes they can do the advisory opinions, but then they can also do modifications.
So does the city do business with amazon.com?
Yes, we do a lot of business with Amazon.
Then I need to get an advisory opinion, right?
Yeah, you do, you should.
Yeah, I think the business with Amazon is more than $5,000.
Yeah, one day, we'll have the mergers and acquisitions section. We'll add that, per Jamil. Go ahead.
And just some of these limits we've already talked about. But again, we've talked about interest of 3% or more with a business entity that's negotiating a contract totaling $5,000 or more. Be employed by a business entity having or negotiating contract. But there's also contention compensation for any matter before or involving the city. That may seem obvious. Actually, in our full ethics presentation, we have a lovely example, I believe, from Ohio, which lays out a planning commission member who didn't quite see the rules as clearly as, as we would think. So overall prohibitions, you don't want to use the prestige of your office for your own personal benefit, influence a contract, retaliate, much like the harassment policy. There's also a rule on purchasing property or equipment from the city while serving or within one year after leaving office. And that's essentially also a way to prevent self-dealing and self-service. So in terms of outside relationships, essentially, you can't hold an outside relationship that's going to impact your impartiality or independence of judgment, represent a party for a fee. Again, the Ohio case I mentioned before, I believe that was Ohio, actually had that instance happening. After termination of service, also act as a compensated representative regarding something you participated in. There's not a one-year time limit, but the issue is, were you secondarily connected with that decision? So there's not really a timeline issue. Confidentiality, that should be fairly clear, but you can't? but you can't use confidential information that you acquired, otherwise unavailable, for your own economic benefit. Again, the same self-dealing rule. It applies to current as well as former officials and former employees. Again, does require these standards be met, acquired during the position that would otherwise be unavailable. So much of the rules involve gifts. You can't accept any gift from a business entity known to seek or have a business relationship. That's the 5,000 rule. Be regulated by their office. And this would tend to affect staff more than anything else. Or be an association engaged in representing counties or municipalities. This is one that came in a couple of years ago. One almost thinks that MML or Mako must have brushed the wrong leg in some way. But, but also that is a gift restriction, but there are exceptions. And that would include meals up to $50. And understanding there has been a measure of inflation, so you can, at least based on my own experience, you can get $50 pretty quick nowadays. See, that is the rule if it's in the presence of the donor, ceremonial gifts, nominal value, which is a $20 limit. There are some that have nominal value. I believe Montgomery County, for instance, has a nominal value of $10. Reasonable expenses, if you are on a panel, engaged in speaking. And then there is an honorarium rule, which actually relies somewhat on the State Ethics Commission decisions, essentially requiring that the honorarium be unrelated to the official's position, but more just your overall expertise. Additional gift exceptions. Tickets from the sponsoring entity, but only to mayor and city council. Again, we had a slide on that a bit earlier. Gifts that are exempted by the Ethics Commission, which does happen, and we'll actually talk about a couple that they have clarified. Gifts that are personal and private from family and household members. I've had to explain this to my wife on an annual basis. But no exemption applies, and this is an important point, if a gift is going to impair your impartiality. And that sometimes is your own judgment. You may have instances where, you know, the rules say it's okay. I remember this, I would like to say a few years ago, but actually several decades ago, my father dealt with contractors all the time. And his rule to me was, I won't let him buy me a cup of coffee. Because he just didn't want anybody to think that they had a little edge on it. Now, in terms of, I mentioned Ethics Commission clarifying certain rules or establishing an exemption. A prize drawing and sharing. The Ethics Commission has said a gift may be okay if you win a prize drawing that's available to everybody else who's attending, or if a food or other gift is shared with other members of the body equally. That may happen with you sometimes, that you receive a cake. Certainly during the holidays, occasionally the planning department will receive the same thing. And rather than return it to somebody, what they will say, they'll make it clear to that person, we're going to have to share it with everybody. And then that's a great opportunity to, sometimes for those of us on the second floor, sample, sample a few things. And certainly, if it helps with ensuring ethics, I'm more than willing to have a cake or cookie.
Take them for the team.
A sacrifice has to be made. But the other rule there is the gift still can't impair impartiality. If it's, if it's just, you know, if there's a funny feeling about it, it just doesn't feel right, saying no is always going to be safe. So required disclosure statements. We mentioned that earlier. That would report if there is a specific gift or a conflict, it applies to everybody. It is required within 30 days. There's a simple form, it's actually online, and lay that out. If there's any questions, certainly contact our office about it. And there may be instances where something happened and you didn't know at the time. Where I had said a minute ago, saying no is safe. Go ahead and file, file the disclosure statement. And you can outline on there precautionary, wasn't aware, didn't know. Because there is, there is a provision where you can explain what was going on. Why did, why did you take it? Here, it lays out a little bit more clearly, date of recurrence, donor, gift value, your estimate, and reason for acceptance. And many, it can be a simple mistake. Again, going ahead with a disclosure, even if there doesn't end up being a violation, that can still be a way to basically protect everybody.
And I know most of you are really, really good about this, but if there's ever a question, a lot of times when you get invitations to certain events and, you know, there's a fee for a dinner and you don't, you don't really know whether it meets requirements or not. And usually you'll email them to, you know, either me or Frank or Eric, and, you know, we can get you in, you know, at least what our opinion is and what we think about it. And it's, it's better to ask upfront and not have a problem than have someone file complaint against you on the back end of it.
Oh, of course. Or even just have doubt about it. It's better, let's be clear. You know, the financial statements annually, that's coming up April 30th. Although they could be filed. I believe we start asking at the end of March or early April. And certainly in, as part of that financial statement, if there is anything that, any gift over 20 or total received over 100. And we've mentioned the City Ethics Commission. That's the group that will issue advisory opinions, exemptions, modifications, as Lynne had mentioned. If there is a complaint, they'll hear the complaint. They also do have some enforcement powers. They can issue the cease and desist, such as with, Mayor and City Council might with the harassment, very similar. Fines of up to $500. And there are new fines added as well for lobbyist violations, which we also haven't seen, but you never know. The Ethics Commission can issue a gift exemption. And we've talked about this already. What are some of the standards? If acceptance isn't detrimental to the impartial conduct of city business, or it's a personal and private, private gift that similarly does not raise a concern. Exemptions and modifications. Sometimes there may be an unreasonable invasion of privacy. Sometimes we may have an impact on having qualified persons be available for public service. Or it's simply not required, and Lynne touched on this, isn't needed to satisfy the purposes of the Ethics Code. That's really the power of your Ethics Commission. And we do have a State Ethics Commission as well. This requires an annual report. And this is also the one that requires our own local ethical ordinances to be at least stringent. And they actually, in being at least stringent, they say you have option A or option B to select. And as I mentioned, annual reports. And so now we move to part three. This is the Open Meetings Act. And this is just a run-through of the way it operates and hopefully answer any questions if there are there. There are four key steps to overall compliance. As you can see, before, during, and after. Before, give notice. You provide advance notice. That lets people know what's happening as well as an agenda. During, well, that means holding the meeting open to the public. That'll avoid a problem. And then afterwards, there is a requirement to prepare minutes. A fourth one, I would like to say a few years ago now, I would say more like five or six now, that there has been a requirement for training. That at least one member has to be designated to receive training. You only have to get certified training once. I'm one of the certified trainers who can do that for you. This is a summary that full training goes anywhere from 60 to 90 minutes, sometimes depending on how many questions we have. But that's a fairly full training, and you only need to have that once. So some of you have already had at least one, either here or at MML or at another conference.
Are you certified?
I am.
What's the standard for advance notice? Is it a day, a week?
Generally, the, the agenda has a 24-hour notice. The advance notice is otherwise reasonable. One of the main thing about advance notice is at least be consistent in what you're doing. The bigger issue with advance notice comes down to emergency meetings usually. So what did you do? And there, what we generally will advise is try to do everything you can, even if it's duplicative. If you have an email set, sometimes they have even robocalls in some areas. Certainly posting and anything else you can do to try to get notice out of an emergency meeting. That's usually where the advance notice comes down. Because sometimes for an emergency, you may only be giving a couple of hour notice. You may have, for instance, if you're going to do a Zoom call based on an emergency situation, and we'll, we'll talk about some of the ins and outs and how that happens. You may have to do everything you can, post it on the website, email listing to go ahead and get that out. And some of the social media now does help in some ways. If you think back 20 years ago, it wasn't available, where you can get word out fairly quickly.
So one, one quick brag before we, Frank goes on the next slide. Frank is one of only two certified open meetings trainers in the state of Maryland. So he has called on Quorum Bit to do this training.
Glad to do that. And emphasis on, I guess, on being certified. People knew that already. But actually, we did that at Lynn's idea because with the new laws that came down, we were thinking, well, we have a number, we have at least eight boards and commissions that may need to go into closed session, not to mention mayor and city council. There's not been this new training requirement, and this, I think, was in 2017. And so we were trying to figure, we want to get something scheduled as soon as possible. And I said, well, we really don't have a lot of certified trainers out there. So we thought, well, what if we have somebody? And I, not for the first time, said, well, okay, fine. I'll do it. There is, it does take a few months to get certified because they have to look at your background. But I think once they saw, you know, active municipal attorney, that's fine. And so we gave that training, I think, to 75 or 80 people at the, at the Casey Center in September of 2017. So getting back to the Open Meetings Act, as far as meetings subject to the Act, includes any deliberation, consideration, or transaction. Deliberation is really the lines, line that is crossed. But what kinds of interactions? Well, a few years ago, we would have said, you know, you need to have an open meeting or a conference call. I think I was saying a few nights ago, if somebody had come up, I'd say in January of 2020, and said, let's do a Zoom meeting, I would have said, really? What are we talking about there? But by February, I had a much better idea. Because we were one of the entities approaching the Attorney General's Office to say, okay, with the state of emergency due to COVID, groups have to meet, but they're not going to be allowed to meet in person. So that's where virtual meetings, as well as social gatherings and retreats, if public business is discussed, but not just a purely social event. So the, this slide is dealing with a recent board decision that dealt with, the, part of the issue is crossing the line with deliberation. The other element is quorum. If you have a five-member body, as you do, and one or two members are engaging or interacting as they wish, there's not going to be an open meeting violation because there has to be a quorum. But when there is a quorum, that is a possibility. And in the past, there has been that deliberation requirement that's been taken fairly seriously. But there has been an instance where the board, in a decision, found that there was a violation. Actually, it was Sykesville, when they were engaged in discussion, not engaged in discussion, but receiving information at the same time. They were receiving information from the planning commission at the same time on an issue of importance that was on their agenda, and it was actually scheduled on the agenda. Here, even as the attendance was not in a council meeting itself, what the Open Meetings Compliance Board called for was notice before and after. So that would be a matter of at the prior council meeting and the meeting after that, to simply provide notice. Because otherwise, there's not much you can do. But if there is deliberation expected, in that case, the Open Meetings Act would apply. And certainly, we would not recommend engaging in deliberation back and forth because that would require one of the three basic requirements. Notice, an agenda afterwards, minutes, and certainly being part, part of an open process. This seems to be a limited issue, but it is something to be aware of. And certainly, staff will be, for instance, working with the clerk when the issue does come up. The question comes up, what should we do? And again, if it's a quorum, getting information. Let's say a quorum of you attend our planning commission on an issue that, getting the same information at the same time. It's a very important issue for the council, scheduled on a council agenda. Just because of that decision, we would recommend making mention of it before and even after, just as you would if you were undertaking a closed meeting. And we'll talk about some of that as well. And so electronic deliberations on public business, that's one that a few years ago, you wouldn't have thought about. But transmitting information by email as well and text without discussion. Look, if it's information only, it's fine. But when it becomes deliberations, that's a problem. I was kind of touching on a decision that led to that. It was from Talbot County. There, the county commissioners were talking about, it was in the midst of the general assembly session. As you know, frequently, you will get a request from, let's say, members of your county delegation saying, we need a decision in, I don't know, 10 minutes? Because there's going to be a hearing, something else has been scheduled. It's a 90-day session. It can be hectic, to say the least. So they were trying to decide, look, we're going to send a letter. Let's do a quick email exchange and figure out what we want in the letter. The problem was, it was a public issue. It did turn into fairly long deliberations, going over 24, up to 48 hours. There, the board had been warning at some point, texts and emails are going to be considered subject to the Open Meetings Act. And they did use that decision to do so. So if there is emailing and text going on via quorum to deliberate, that could violate the Act. And how do we avoid that? Avoid reply all. When it becomes a deliberation, if it's information only, that's fine. But if it's a continuous deliberation, it's going to raise a concern. And again, the rule, it says simultaneous. But if it's effectively constant, based on the technology, the board could find that it's a violation. So what do we do? What are the options? Conference calls and Zoom meetings are fine, can be on an emergency basis. Make sure to try to get as much notice out as we can. That's one option. Individual emails without interactive deliberation. I think I saw one here recently saying, don't reply all, reply to me directly if there's a question. One on one is not going to be a problem because you're not going to have that, again, it's deliberation that crosses the line.
Can you clarify that actually for me? Because in, Jamil and I could deliberate one-on-one.
We're not a quorum.
We're not a quorum. So it's specifically when there's a quorum?
That's right. But when you add three, then that could, that becomes a quorum. Now, if it's a seven number, I, for some time, I would say, sometimes, I think now in a prior life, I worked in Carroll County where they had three county commissioners. That meant no two of them at that time could interact. That's the old traditional county commissioner standard that was put in place. That's the old traditional county commissioner standard that was put in place, I think, even in the 1800s. They now have five, and part of their concern was, we can't even have two. Because you sometimes do want to interact on a matter of, hey, this is coming up.
It's so impractical.
Sure.
Clarification question. Can you have a quorum for the purpose, you know how you have executive sessions for a bunch of different carve-outs? They still have the same notice requirements and all that, but if we're seeking legal advice, and so there's, maybe not deliberations, but there's advice being sought and advice being given, can that be amongst entire or that also has to be partial done?
Yeah, I mean, again, if it's, it's just providing information, then that would be fine. It's when, you know, you start talking about what you're going to do based on that advice.
Well, but for example, I may be asking you about, hey, what color is the sky? And you're giving me advice, and if there are other folks who've copied, then they want clarifications. And then, does that become deliberation with counsel? And then we come to a decision of what to do with that. Does my question make sense?
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, once you start about, our decision is going, you know, now we're going to talk, start talking about our decision, I think that's where it crosses the line.
Okay.
If it's just all purely factual.
No, yeah, no, but I'm saying that the five of us.
It's a closed session. I think that's when we have to announce that we're doing a closed session.
The other thing is deliberation can be considered broadly if it's something affecting the public interest.
Sure.
If there's, if it's purely receiving, that's fine. But even getting legal advice, it's not going to be, what do you think about the Constitution and what about the UN and all that sort of stuff? It's going to be on a specific topic, and even being on a specific topic, that's setting the stage for a measure of interaction. Now, there is an exception for that. That is a closed meeting exception that does allow that to happen. But, and we will be touching on that pretty quickly. We've touched on this slide already, that as the board and Court of Special Appeals decision, now known as the appellate court, has held that the Act allows conference calls. The same rules apply to Zoom or Skype, Google, Microsoft. Also, some are using in-person as well as live feed, and I think we do both as well. Doing more is always a way to make sure that you have the ability of the public to observe because that's what the Open Meetings Act's about. We always do recommend having the conference call option available. And that ends up being important because you have to assume that technology is wonderful when it works. It doesn't always work. We get to 90% sometimes, but then there's that 10%, which sometimes is the area where I find myself living, that you can have a problem. So we were talking about public notice being required before a meeting. Talked about reasonably in advance. There is a code provision, Open Meetings Act provision that does require the agenda within 24 hours, and then within reason after that. You do want to make the method consistent, and we had already talked about extra efforts. Now, the exceptions that we finally get to, the first three are probably the most important. Personnel matters regarding individual employees. So if you're setting a general raise for everybody or setting a HR rule that's going to apply to everybody, that's not going to be subject to this. This is for an individual employee, and it reflects personnel confidentiality. If you're receiving, and it does say receipt, of legal advice, and that generally means getting legal advice from an attorney who is advising you as to the actions you should take. The litigation exception is more broad because that can involve staff and sometimes broader conversations between, here's the litigation issue, here's the advice that we would give you on whether this section applies. The litigation exception would allow a broader discussion about how are staff going to react? How will we deal with this? And what else might be going on? Other exceptions are actually a total of 15, but some of the other top ones here were property acquisition but not sale. Some of the others here, such as collective bargaining, and there's one for economic development as well. Once the agreement's entered, that has to be done in public. But this is talking about the pre-negotiation and discussions. The process to close the meeting, generally, this is something that staff will assist with, but you identify a specific exception. There is a closing statement that provides for the citation, the general topic, which is the same as the citation, and the reasons. This is something that falls on the chair, but certainly staff here assist with that. Sometimes there's a question of, oh, there has to be a public vote to close. And for some closed meetings, that's the whole purpose of the evening. Why would we do a public meeting just for the sake of holding a vote? Because that is what the Open Meetings Act calls for, so that people at least have the chance to observe your vote and your decision. And that, of course, would be after notice. It is important to stay within the exception. That's something I think we do very well, but sometimes it can be important to identify somebody to watch that because it can, in a conversation back and forth, get easy to go beyond that. It is important to decide, what are we going to disclose post-meeting? Because there's no clear enforcement to that, so having an understanding of what we're going to say can be important. There is the training requirement. The compliance checklist is required. If you're designated member, if you only have one, can't attend, well, you're not limited to one. Everybody can be designated. And a closed session is, under law, impermissible if the public body hasn't designated a member. I don't think we have any board or commission, I would be shocked, at least of those that would meet in a closed session, that somebody hasn't been designated. When are minutes required? Generally, as part of the next open session, but also within reason. Sometimes staff haven't had the chance to prepare something, but it'll be at the next one that's available. What do the minutes include? Here's the outline, basically, and this is dealing with the closed meeting. What was the purpose? What was the citation, votes to close, topics and subject matter? And in terms of minutes for a closed meeting, you'll always see that at your next open session. Because we're very careful to make sure we're following the code in that. So when there's a violation, what are the remedies? There is the Compliance Board. The Compliance Board gives advisory opinions, but they do look at public shaming as their basic. They don't have subpoena power, meaning that they have to go based on whatever is provided. They can't require. But the public body, if they do find a violation, has to summarize it at the next public meeting, sign it, and return it. So that's the public shaming part. If somebody goes to Circuit Court, now Circuit Court has a little bit more power, is not limited to an advisory role, they can actually overturn the decision. Sometimes the big issue there is that the court can award attorney's fees, which can be an important factor. They can also, in some cases, assess the penalty. So the court is much less limited than the Open Meetings Compliance Board. There are occasionally bills, and I probably shouldn't say this since the General Assembly is still on, that the Open Meetings Compliance Board is recommended to gain additional teeth and enforcement power, which actually did happen to the Public Information Act Compliance Board. But that has not happened here. I think partly, even if you listen to folks that have worked in the AG's office for years, they will say, when the Open Meetings Act was first passed, it was very informal because the purpose is to communicate and to say to a jurisdiction, oh, you need to, you know, you need to send out notice more in advance. They're very happy for that jurisdiction to say, okay, we'll make sure to do that in the future. Now, it's taken much more seriously because of the public shaming and usually involves attorneys on both sides, one way or another. Certainly, when we've had a complaint, that's the approach we've taken because we want to be very clear that we are following the law, and if we aren't, we want to know why. But it seems that the public shaming, at least for the Compliance Board, will be remaining in place for a while. And that's all we have.
Thank you very much. Terrific presentation from both of you. I don't have much to say that's new on this because this is training that I've been through. And I was part of, I'm certified in open meetings, been working with the ethics law since '08, and was one of the originators of the harassment regulations that we have. I, you know, that's the one part that I think separates Gaithersburg from the rest because everyone's subject to the ethics law as, because it's mandated from the state, and to open meetings because it's mandated from the state. But harassment, most elected officials, as Lynn said at the beginning of her presentation, are not covered by a policy like that. And we have voluntarily chosen to hire, to hold ourselves to sort of a higher standard of behavior, and I'm proud of that. But up net, I mean, it's, you know, great, great presentation. Questions, comments from anybody? Lisa?
I think Neil has to say it.
We'll go to Neil, then Neil.
All right, thanks. I just, Frank, I want to know if you're teaching the ethics class at MML this year?
Actually, ethics I have done for all staff. I haven't done that class at MML. Open meetings I've done.
Open meetings.
And I think it's been two, I think it's been two years. It wasn't last summer, it was two years ago. So it's possible.
Yeah, they usually alternate between ethics and, or, excuse me, between open meetings and public information every year. So I think this should be the open meetings year.
Kind of tell Councilmember Hernandez to make sure.
I felt that was coming.
Take Frank's class. It's a good class.
Neil?
Well, on that note, does taking your class make you certified or is there more involved in that? The Open Meetings Act class?
Actually, it's a matter of making sure that information gets to the folks at the Academy on Excellence with the University of Maryland. That's what it requires.
I've got the certificate saying I've completed the curriculum, so.
Yeah. It is a matter of, I mean, I have mine from 2017 because I, I think, well, in teaching the course, shouldn't I get some credit? There's also an online course that you can take through the Attorney General's website. Now, the downside to that is it's six parts, and there are tests through that. And some are more fond of testing than others. But that is another way that, because it's recognized that, what if there's not a class available? And what if we have a whole new board? And what if we have a new Planning Commission and they need to meet? So that's why that online opportunity is also available.
All right. So as Judd pointed out to me, after I asked about my employment with Amazon and the fact that we shop through them, that was disclosed in my annual disclosure statement. Do I need a separate advisory opinion? And if so, how do I, who do I reach?
Don't you want to do this off the head that's coming to you online?
I think we should, we should know what the procedure is for asking for opinion because there's no contact information here on the site that I saw.
Yeah. Requesting an advisory opinion, we do on a very informal basis. So that can be via email. I mean, you can do a formal letter, but it's a very informal process. Currently, no, actually, Eric is currently the current staff liaison to the Appellate Commission.
But if it comes to any of the roles, address it. So anybody in the city or community's office, we'll make sure.
Okay. And one last thing, this is a tougher one. Before COVID hit, we were looking at an online service where we could have discussions in open. And then COVID hit, and a lot of things went by the wayside. But I assume that something like that where we can talk and anybody can access it is still legal under Open Meetings Act. And are you comfortable if we restart those discussions and see about something like that? The reason I bring it up, not so much for this body since we meet very frequently, but a lot of the committees could use some time outside of committee meetings to discuss their subjects.
I think that would be one of those things, and I, you know, I do remember that discussion from a number of years ago. We would really have to make sure about the notice requirements that the public is well aware of, hey, this chat is going to be open for this period of time.
And notes afterwards.
Yeah.
And the agenda for the discussion as well?
Yes. I mean, I don't think it can be kind of a perpetual.
You might as well have a meeting if you're going to do that.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it can be just sort of this perpetual, hey, tell us everything you think about transportation and have it open forever kind of chat.
It would take me forever.
True. Anything else from this? Jamil?
I'll go after.
I'll just say thank you. Obviously, this is a refresher, having gone through this when we first came on board. But I agree with the mayor. I think we've done a good job about being proactive and making sure that, you know, as Frank, when you started off, said, it's about appearances and making sure. I think we've all sought out your guidance at one time or another, myself most recently, as this past month. So always appreciate the guidance, making sure that we're staying on the straight and narrow.
Why'd you look at me?
New guy. But no, thank you, and it's always good to keep a refresher. So thank you.
Yeah, and again, we always encourage, you know, please ask if there's ever any question, any doubt, you know, please reach out to.
Oh, I'm not shy, yeah. Just two quick, we're done?
Young good, yeah.
Thank you very much. The, I guess, one non-hypothetical question, and then I can, for the rest, I can just ask. So in our day jobs, we, my day job, I'm just, we often get offered tickets to sporting events as a, you know, from our bank or from our accounting firm or FedEx, right, or carriers. I would imagine the city does a lot of business or some business with FedEx or some of these. So should you, would you recommend just getting advisory opinions to just create a record? Or that doesn't, you know?
Yeah, and again, as long as it's not related to, in your official capacity, they're not inviting you as a council member.
No, right.
Yeah, then there's no problem with that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't imagine there's testimony from the public, but there is a member of the public here. I don't know if you wish to testify on this, on this matter, do you? If you do, come up to the podium. If not, then no worries.
For the record, Scott Weber, a friend of Gaithersburg, and just want to appreciate not only the efforts to go through here, but also to Gaithersburg and the ability for members who aren't even members of the city of Gaithersburg to come in here and be a part of these open meetings. And so I would applaud you and ask that you ask all your other local jurisdictions to also share in that vision that you have. And to that, if I have something that was going to be part of public opinion, just to share, may I leave it with the clerk?
Yeah, you can leave it with the clerk.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And I don't see, let me just double-check one more time, but I didn't see anybody participating on Zoom. So, okay. Well, thank you all for the training. And Councilmember Wu, who is away for military service, will have to schedule some time with you guys to go through this separately.
Or to watch the, yeah, watch the presentation, yeah.
Or to watch, yeah. He's gone through this before, I'm sure.
Make sure there's a quiz if you want.
So let me just figure out what the date is, next Monday for our.
Fifth.
Monday. It's February 5th will be the next regular meeting in the Mayor and Council. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.